This is an important opportunity. League of Women Voters has a long history of providing fair and nonpartisan opportunities for voters to learn more about candidates and issues. We are not for or against any candidate ever. During this forum, the views expressed are those of the candidates, not of Paradise Valley Estates or League of Women Voters. Just a notice, copyright ownership of any recordings or transcribed quotations resides with League of Women Voters, and any use for any campaign would require our written permission. This is a candidate forum, not a debate. The candidates will be asked to respond to questions, to share their thinking, perspectives, and action plans to lead effectively. They will not be addressing each other or disputing the comments of their opponents. If they do so, I will intervene as the moderator. We're here to give each of the candidates the opportunity to share their messages on an equal basis. It's your job, as the audience, to listen carefully and make your own personal judgments on their statements. After the candidates' opening remarks, the forum will open for questions. I will pose the initial questions to the candidates from a selection of questions that were mostly written by residents of PVE. Each candidate will have two minutes each to address these questions. Since we have three candidates, I will ask a different candidate to answer first through the first three questions, and then we'll follow that same rhythm throughout the forum. Prior to the forum, I met with the candidates to establish who would speak first. The audience is asked to refrain from applause, booing, cheering, whistling, or any other demonstration of support or non-support for the candidate. Applause for the candidates will be allowed once at the conclusion of the forum. Everyone present can suggest questions for the candidates. We have cards available, as you've all kind of seen, so that you can make suggestions. Suggestions need to be brief and specific. All questions must be written to be answered equally by all candidates. There will be no questions posed to specific candidates. Our volunteers will then collect your written questions to be taken to the screeners. The screeners will arrange questions into small groups if needed to eliminate redundancy. They will summarize questions, if there are more than one, on the same topic, and then they will forward those questions to me to be included in the sequence of questions. We will begin with the opening statements from the candidates. They will have two minutes for their opening and closing remarks. We have a timekeeper sitting in front who will hold up cards for each speaker to let them know at the 32nd point that they -- in their two minutes, and then a stop sign for "that's it." And just to know, candidates, if you've already said what you have to say on a certain question, and it hasn't been two minutes, that's okay.[262.64][262.64](Laughter.) That means we might get over --
So, keep that up. Yeah.
That means we might get over more questions.
You got it.
Okay. So, we will start with opening statements, and we'll start with Joe Joyce.
Well, thank you. I want to thank everybody for having us here today. During this cycle, we've had very few opportunities to address our citizens in our district as all three of us here together. So, we really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Joe Joyce. I'm a lifetime member or resident here in Solano County and in Fairfield. I've raised my family here. I started my law enforcement career at the Sheriff's Department. I was hired by Al Cardoza, and I was fortunate enough as a young man to buy a house at 20 years old. And then we did, like most of our parents, we saved our money, we reinvested it in a house, and then we made enough money to purchase a house in Sanctuary Valley, which is here in District Four in Rolling Hills area. We raised our family. My daughter is fortunate enough to be an elected official in Sioux City. She is a city councilwoman, very proud of her. I've been, one way or another, involved in civic activities my whole life. Either I was a police officer, a youth volunteer. I currently am volunteering in several committees. I'm a current board of director for Solano County Fair. Yes, the Valeo Fair is not the Valeo Fair, so I want to be able to help the city with safety and the other things that are affecting us today. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, we'll have Joe Martinez.
How's it going, everybody? My name is Joe Martinez. I'm running for Fairfield City Council, District Four. Thank you all for making the time to come out, this busy time, to come and hear all of us in regards to the city of Fairfield. Born and raised here in Fairfield, went to all local schools, David Weir, Sullivan, Fairfield High. Didn't even leave for college, went to UC Davis. For the past 15 years, I've been a deputy probation officer with Solano County. And so, the main reason why I'm running for city council is with my dad coming here in 1969 in the United States Navy, Travis Air Force Base, Mare Island, and my mother's side came in here in 1928, picking the farms off of Rockville Road. We came from a huge family in a small city, and we loved how it was where you can drive from Albertson's on North Texas all the way down to Target, used to be now his Target, on Catonasso Drive. And Fairfield has just lost that pride, has lost just that home feeling. And if we're looking at homelessness, we're looking at job development, we're looking at stores closing, we want to bring that back. And so, for me, I wanted to come up today, I'm running for city council, to bring in new energy, new faces, new innovation, to stand with today's leaders and solve some of these issues. Been part of the Matt Garcia Foundation, been part of the Kiwanis Club, has been a union president of my probation staff for the past six years. We've set up our Center for Positive Changes for those who are offenders here, our PRCS, which is basically parolees who have last offended with non, non, non felonies, and we've created One Stop Shops. I would like to create hubs to help those who are houselessness and those in the city in doing crime and making a new self-sufficient program here in our city, and hope to talk to you more.
And now, Pam Bertani.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here this evening at Paradise Valley Estates. I'm Pam Bertani. I'm serving my second term as vice mayor, my third term on the city council, and this is my first time running for District Four, which is currently represented by council member Rick Vaccaro, who has announced his retirement, at least for a while, thank you, Rick, and endorsed my campaign for District Four. In addition to my work on the city council, I'm a practicing California attorney with an emphasis in tax and intellectual property law. I am a gubernatorial appointee to the Uniform Law Commission, and I'm a former researcher and developer at Bayer in Berkeley and a former AP Biology teacher, so a little bit of a science geek in there. And I'm running for city council because now more than ever, leadership actually matters, and that's not just a campaign slogan, that is a matter of fact. In the coming months and years to come, the city of Fairfield has some very big-ticket items on the agendas in the years to come, and I believe, and I hope you believe, that I'm the best candidate to get the job done for District Four on the city council. Leadership matters on big issues like homelessness, affordable housing, which goes hand-in-hand with homelessness, with our budget and our deficit and our ability to close the gap. We have major issues with our LLMDs, which we will probably discuss this evening, and community engagement, which is why we had listening tours last year, out of which came for Paradise Valley Estates, and expanded transportation availability for PVE. So, leadership matters, community engagement matters. Thank you so much for --
I want to have you remain standing because you start the first question.
Sure.
Before we start the questions, we did have a clarifying question. Because this is District Four, you will be voting for one person on your ballot to fill the District Four council position. So, for the first question, what are the most pressing issues for the Fairfield City Council now and in the next few years?
The most pressing issue right now and in the coming years is our unhoused population and homelessness, because we're dealing with an issue that involves human beings that deserve better than living on the streets. You've all heard of the Grants Pass decision, by which now cities can enforce their anti-camping statutes, which we weren't able to do in the prior years. It is important that we realize that Grants Pass is a great decision for our cities, but it is not a panacea. It was a 6-3 split on the United States Supreme Court. The dissenting opinion carved out a very clever roadmap for challenges to anti-camping ordinances like ours in the coming years. So, it's important that we use this decision not as a weapon to demonize homelessness, but as an incentive to help get people off of the streets and expeditiously connected with the services and resources that they need to get back on track. And that will affect our economic development policies, that affects businesses right now in the city of Fairfield who are struggling with managing their businesses and homelessness. And hand-in-hand with that goes affordable housing. We have a pretty robust affordable housing entree right now with about 400 affordable housing units throughout the city. It'll be important for us as we continue to finalize our general plan update to make sure that we are investing in those neighborhoods and that we are growing our affordable housing availability, because it is more humane and less expensive to keep people in their housing as opposed to rehousing families that have fallen into homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Joe Joyce.
We're going to be just making the circuit up there. Since they're all standing up, I'm going to stand up. And I apologize for not standing up. I'm recovering from a back injury. So, I agree homelessness is one of the major issues, and homelessness has continued to increase under the current leadership, doubled from last year. We spent millions of dollars in ARPA funding and the others, and we currently are in a transition period where we're trying to do a navigation center here in Fairfield. So, kudos. We just did a ribbon cutting for Fairhaven Gardens, which is a wonderful unit, and it has wraparound services. But until we start treating homelessness as it needs to be with identifying the mental illness, the drug and alcohol addictions, and then the criminal element that's actually out there that are victimizing and continue victimizing our businesses and our people, right? But we have a safety issue, right? We've got to feel safe in our communities. When we don't feel safe to go shopping, run our errands, and do those things, our retail and our tax dollars are going to other communities where our people are going to -- and shopping where it feels safe, right? So, when we rely, and the city relies on retail or investments to fund our services, right, we can no longer rely on that. So, we've got to figure out how we make our communities safe, how we make our private sector want to invest in the money. So, it's economics, it's homelessness, it's those things that need to be addressed simultaneously. So, it's not just the homeless. Homeless is the major issue, but the economic development and ability to do that, safety or the feeling of safety is our primary concern. When people feel safe, everything feels better, okay?
Okay. Have you remain standing, sorry. If you're the last on --
He hasn't spoken yet.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Joe Martinez.
Joe, JoJo.
JoJo, yeah, sorry. You have two minutes.
Okay. So, I'm Joe Martinez. So, there's two issues that I feel are the most important for Fairfield, and number one is houselessness, and I'll get back to that. I think the number one issue for us, especially for District Four, is wildfires, and it's just been, if you remember the LNU fires of August 2020, I can still remember the fires in September of 2017, and the plans, if you saw Rachel Solano, we live off of Hillborne, it took an hour and a half for an evacuation plan to get out. And so, as wildfires start to increase, we need to start advocating more for our firefighters. I know firefighters, a lot of money, but as we pay car insurance, and car insurance is super expensive, you know, firefighters is our lifeline, is our car insurance, is our neighborhood insurance, and we want to make sure that we advocate and be preventative with wildfires and not be reactive with it. And so, whether it be redevelopment, it be doing more preventative things during the wintertime, so when it comes down for summertime, we're already set to go. I think there was a key operational mishap when we had the -- when they had the August 2020 fires. I mean, I know there was a lot of fires in different other cities, and with our hills back here, all we have to really do is bulldoze, but because of the human power, we just didn't have enough human power, there were evacuations. And so, I really want to advocate for equipment and for fire to -- oh, okay, or 30 seconds, right? Sorry, for homelessness, okay. For homelessness, yeah, it's the second thing. We cannot arrest our way out of homelessness. As a probation officer, my current unit right now is I visit every person that's arrested in Solano County at this time. I think the city council right now has done a great job with the homelessness, and the reason why it has come back is because the homelessness is in the outskirts of Fairfield, and they're creating fires, so they're being pushed back into the city. And I just want to help more with the city council now in getting more ideas.
And now, I'll say, Joe Martinez, you can stand up, because you're -- Joe Martinez, you were the last, you're the first. You know, there's a statement there someplace, the last will be first?
Right.
So, okay, so you're first on the second question. Do you support or oppose Measure L, Fairfield Business License Modernization Simplification, and Measure M, Fairfield Transient Occupancy Tax? For or against, and why?
So, yes, I do support both Measure L and Measure M. It's the last time they've had an assessment on raising for the business licenses. It's been over 30, 35-plus years, and it will bring more in line with all the other cities that have businesses and that pay those extra taxes, and so it just will make it fairer, on a fair line with inequality to the businesses. The roads that they use, the parks, the maintenance, you know, that's all, you know, that's all the wear and tear that people come here, not from Fairfield. So, also with Measure M, that's the hotel tax. When they come in here, yes, I mean, they bring their money, and we like their disposable money, but at the same time, they still do use our streets, our businesses, our roads, maintenance, and so, and that measure also with the hotels also has not been reassessed, not looked at for 35-plus years. So, I am for those measures. It will only improve Fairfield, and I think that it's a fair thing when people come to our city, that if they use our, if they use our equipment, they use our roads, that they pay their fair share with it also. And so, yes, I am for both L and M.
Thank you. Ms. Bertani?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I support both Measure L and Measure M, and I voted with my colleagues on the city council to put those measures on the ballot. As I briefly mentioned in my opening comments, we faced, last year, we faced a $20 million deficit, and we got that down to $10 million by doing, among other things, 5% structural cuts across each department in the city. And as another way of closing the gap with this structural deficit, which is now down to $10 million, we proposed, and I support, Measure L and Measure M. The business license tax and the transient occupancy tax have not been addressed since Ronald Reagan was president. It's time to bring these two taxes up to par with our current economy, and importantly, these are two taxes that are not assessed against residents. These are business license taxes with a new, fair, and more simple and equitable structure, and the transient occupancy tax, which will be paid by visitors who come and stay at our hotels. That'll go from 10% to 12%. All in all, if both measures pass with a 50-plus-one vote, that will bring, that will generate approximately $1.8 million annually, and we'll have our structural deficit down to around $8 million or so. And by the way, with the structural deficit reductions, we did not cut a single service to our residents, we did not lose a single job from our city staff, and so these and other measures will help us continue to close the gap without touching, by the way, our current reserve, which is about 20% of the general fund budget, which is about $58 million. Thank you. So, yes, I support both.
Mr. Joyce.
So, again, like my opponents, I actually do support both measures. I actually oppose the fact that it's taken 40 years for our current council or the ones previous to provide the oversight necessary to realize that they hadn't updated the structure, either one of those, for 40 years. Neither one of them are excessive, they do need to be brought in line. Also, my opponent has stated that not a single person will be laid off, not a single service will be cut. That's a good thing, but again, it doesn't address the other point of sooner or later, we're going to have to look at our structural deficit, our growth of government, right? We can't continue to always look at fees, raising fees or raising taxes. Sooner or later, those things are going to have to be looked at, you know? We can't continue to grow government, and we're going to have to look at living within the means. Our taxpayers want to give us, but we've got to look at giving our employees the best equipment, the best salaries, the best training that we can afford to give them, not what will put us into deficit. So, again, thank you.
Mr. Joyce, now you do start.
Okay.
Okay, question three. What specific measures beyond what Fairfield is already doing would you do to reduce homelessness, and how would you pay for it?
The biggest thing that I would actually do is, number one, we have a county-wide system, Capsulona, that has been in existence for at least about 24 months, where the county is consolidated with the other cities to try and form a consolidated approach, go after state money more effectively and bring more into the county. At this point, it's failed to generate additional money. They were actually, at one point, more effective generating those dollars. The city of Fairfield was actually very effective and had a very robust program. I'm hoping that that will turn around and Capsulona will become more effective. But we've got to do better at providing wraparound services, doing more programs like Pam and them have been doing with Fairhaven Commons and stuff, where the housing, transitional housing and support services are keeping those people out of services. But we've got to provide shelter and mental health services, but we have to identify those people and provide the services needed. We can't service them as they're all homeless. We have to identify the individual groups. Mentally health or mental health people are not the same as alcoholic, and the people that are just lost their jobs and just need to be rehoused or retrained, they're totally different people, they need to be treated that way.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez.
So, with the houselessness issue, as a probation officer, I work daily with the houseless and see, you know, the ongoing issues that they battle. And once again, I'd like to say we cannot arrest our way out of homelessness, and each, it's a dire situation that all cities in California are dealing with now currently. Right now, I love what they're doing with the hit team, the homeless intervention team with the police department, and they're making quick, swift issues where if they are congregating, they take them out and they clean it up really good. But I'd really like to take a step further and create service hubs. And so, in regards to someone getting arrested, they go to jail, they go to arraignment, there's that in-between time when they get out of jail, there before they can even get services from probation or go to health and social services off Beck Avenue, they got that time where they have no strength or no foundation to go through. So, I would like to create service hubs that focuses on mental health, that focuses on drug abuse, that focuses on lifestyle, that focuses on job development. And Solano County and Fairfield has presented a lot of the services already, it's just sometimes that these individuals don't want it, and sometimes we do enable. And so, another thing that I really want to push more further is to create self-sufficiency plans with these individuals. And so, what I want to do is give it's a little bit of an enabler, but give them cell phones and try to see how we can contact family members. So, what happens is what we define as urban development defines a houseless person as someone who does not have a person or a family member or friend that does not can help them without self-sufficiency in the city. So, hopefully, we could try to reconnect them with a family member outside of the city or within the city, and creating a step towards self-sufficiency, and that is one push I would really like to push for here in Fairfield.
Ms. Bertani.
Thank you. So, the common --
One minute.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me? I sit down? Ready? So, one of the common themes that you've heard and that we continue to deal with with our unhoused population is that of mental health. We have a rapid-response team that goes out, cleans up encampments, and connects people to services. The problem is that some people don't want our services. Some people want to be left alone, to live under the freeway or in the bushes, and that is the real issue that we have to grapple with. So, what I would do and what we're going to do, care courts are coming to Solano County, and the city of Fairfield needs to study very carefully the models of the care courts that have been rolled out in the Bay Area, in San Francisco County, and other Bay Area cities, so that we can have mental health facilities, mental health services, and mental health experts that can help these people who are our unhoused population, who are on the street, to get the medication that they need to make better decisions. You know, we were not built to live on the streets, and, you know, no one wants to live on the streets unless they don't think they have any -- And, you know, no one wants to live on the streets unless they don't think they have any other alternative. So I'm looking forward to leading the way in Solano County with our care courts so that we can get people first the services and then everything else that they need to make better decisions for their life's choices.
Ms. Bertini, you are first for question four. How would you deal with the state of California's proposal to take more than half of our Lake Berryessa water?
Fight against it. You know, the city of Fairfield has, as one of its biggest amenities, biggest economic development tools, biggest draws for businesses like Anheuser-Busch, is our water. We have superior water here. And so, I don't have a action plan to fight against it. I know the city of Fairfield wrote a letter against it, which we all signed. But I would really go, at the next level, go grassroots and get our community involved, because there are power, there's power in numbers. And so, I would have, I would support and work in a grassroots effort to make sure that as many residents are engaged in the process for retaining our water for the city of Fairfield. It is tremendously important that we do that and that we do that as a community in an engaged and active manner.
Thank you. Would you like to hear the question again?
No, I heard it.
Okay.
Okay, so, in water rights and Lake Berryessa, Lake Berryessa is a federal project. Water rights in California, on the delivery part of it, is gonna be a fight, right? And the Delta Tunnels are a fight, the water all over the place. We concentrate on Lake Berryessa. We've got other projects in the Sacramento area, up in the Chico area and stuff, for a new reservoir. We've got a lot of leverage in the fact, or allies in the fight. The feds will probably end up stepping in. But she's right. I mean, it's gonna take, because Sacramento's gonna try, because there's money and water, and they're gonna try. And they want to save the environment. The reality is, only 25% of the water is actually used for human consumption, right? And agriculture. 80% of the water, 75% of the water, is used to flush the ecosystem, right? And those are facts. I mean, you could Google them. 80% or 70% of the water is used to keep the rivers and streams clean for fish and the environment. So we don't have a water problem. We have a water storage problem in California. We don't have enough reservoirs. We don't retain enough of the water. So we're gonna have a fight.
Mr. Martinez?
So with the water issue, again, it's like what both Pam and Joe have said, is we've got to fight for our water. This is our land. We've got to take ownership and we've got to take pride with it. A lot of it is, we've got to educate our voters. We got an infrastructure, we got to put investment to putting information and informing our citizens what are the things that go on. You know, Sacramento's not very transparent. And a lot of today's generation, we're just instant gratification with our cell phones and the media and the internet and the TikTok. And so, what we really got to do, and one main purpose for me up here, is to educate our generation to, hey, you got to step up, because all these other people in Sacramento and all the politicians up there are trying to, you know, finagle their own ways, thinking that we're not listening. And a part of it is true, that a lot of our constituents here don't pay attention at all. And so, my part in this is I really want to push forward a new generation that can represent us and know that we're fighting for each other, that we're standing together, and making sure that politicians in Sacramento know that we're educated, that we know the details of everything in regards to water, infrastructure, investment, research, economy. And so, that is my main thing, is to make sure that we educate our constituents there in regards to the water.
Mr. Martinez, you're up for, to start. Question five. What should Fairfield be doing to bring more Bay Area jobs to Fairfield?
So we got to show that we're, you know, we have the labor force here. I think we are, we are one of the top, most diverse city here in the United States. And we are close to UC Davis. We are close to Solano College. We have big names, Ennet Tech, we have Valley Strong, we have Anheuser-Busch, we've got Jelly Belly. I think what we really got to do is be advocates for ourselves and show that we're a strong, we're a strong community. If you look at Trader Joe's, I know back in 1991, that was a good, there was a good foundation of group of people that got at Trader Joe's into Fairfield. We don't, you know, we don't have to go travel to any other place to get to a Trader Joe's now. So we've got to model that type of grassroots-level organization and advertise what we have great here. We're right next to Napa Valley. We're 40 minutes away from Sacramento. We're 35 minutes away from San Francisco. And so, we are our own great resource in telling businesses that we are going to be the next frontier county here and that we have the connections and we have the human power to build what we want to build. And just look at what we have here in the schools that we have. And so, I want to push further in invigorating our economy and our people to advertise that Fairfield and Solano County is the place to be.
Ms. Bertini?
Thank you. So we, to bring jobs here, I say three things. Number one, we have to collaborate with other organizations in the economic development space. The Chamber of Commerce, Solano EDC, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, and harness our economic development efforts to make sure that our economic development community is speaking with one voice and working in unison as opposed to apart. Number two, we have to target sectors that are ripe for businesses to come to in Fairfield. Target business sectors such as defense logistics, such as advanced agricultural, food manufacturing, businesses that rely heavily on water use, as we've already discussed. So we need to target our business development efforts in the sectors that make sense for those businesses to come to thrive on the resources that we currently have in the city of Fairfield. And of course, biotechnology. We're between UC Berkeley, Go Bears, and UC Davis. And we have a, you know, biotechnology kind of cluster here in Solano County with a robust biotech program at Solano Community College that we have to capitalize on. And third, we have to brand properly. Right now, the city of Fairfield has like three different brands. You know, Fairfield first, Business is Our Business, Meet Us in the Middle. I mean, what are we? Compare and contrast Nike, just do it. Compare and contrast Disney, Mickey. We have to brand effectively. Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
So, I think I forgot the question, but I think it's actually about economic development?
Yeah, let me repeat the question for you. What should Fairfield be doing to bring more Bay Area jobs to Fairfield?
So again, we talk about the economic development. We do actually, we have to focus, we have to partner with economic development and jobs training. Solano College is one of them. But we have to target industries we can actually perform. Pam talked about water. We do have water for now, right? But we have no power. We have no ability, and PG&E has no ability to give us good delivery dates. We've lost businesses and big manufacturing capability because PG&E has no ability to deliver. They have the infrastructure problems. They don't have a date that they can do. The county has lost manufacturing and agricultural jobs throughout the county because PG&E doesn't have the infrastructure capability to deliver. So again, so we've got to target smart businesses, right? We're gonna have to target computer sciences or those type of businesses that are low power consumption and high tech. So again, big agriculture, lots of water, lots of power, those aren't the things that we're gonna be able to use, right? We know that retail's flat because the mall's half-empty. So maybe those aren't the ones we're gonna use. We've got to be smarter in picking what we're gonna recruit. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Joyce, you are first with the next question. Question six. And this kind of changes the tone just a little bit. Describe an ethical dilemma you've faced in the past and how you resolved it.
Oh, in the past, so, when I was a law enforcement officer, I used to be on the gang task force for the U.S. Attorney. And one of those things that we used to do is I used to go to Chinatown in San Francisco. And the Chinatown gang task force, we used to go to Chinese restaurants. And we would have big old dinners. And in San Francisco, San Francisco police officers didn't pay for their meals. Well, I happened to pay. Also, the Internal Affairs investigator for my department. And it was kind of ethical dilemma. So I would actually pay for my meal and call it the tip. And one day, we walked out and the San Francisco officer said, "What are you doing?" And I said, "I'm paying for my meal." And they said, "Now they're gonna expect a tip every time we leave out of here," right? I went back to my chief of police. I said, "Look, I can't, I can't keep going over there and working with these guys because they don't pay for the meal." He says, "As long as you pay for your meal and you leave it on the table, you're fine." And it just always bothered me that these guys would do that. So I never actually went back to that task force. So again, you know, the day I went to work as a police officer, I took an oath of office and it said, "Serve and protect and do the serving." I don't know where that comes from, but I actually believed that oath of office. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
I think one thing that comes into mind, and it's probably out of my character, was standing up to my chief. So as a deputy probation officer and as our, as my labor shop steward, there were, so my chief is supervisionary, looks like Mel Gibson. He could sell snow tires in Florida. He always says, "I can sell snow tires in Florida," joke. And he was just a super presence, super charismatic. And when it came down to, when it came down to dealing with negotiations in regards to having raises, he proposed a 9% raise to our managers and zero to our, to our line staff. And totally, totally out of my character, but I feel it's probably the most ethical thing. I can't believe I did. But I did stand up to my chief. And a lot of it, a lot of, he likes to do a lot of dog and pony show and show the public what we do. And I mean, I loved him to death and I were just testing each other. A couple of weeks ago, he donated to the campaign, even through our fights and our black eyes that we gave each other. But I stood up to him. And just saying that we could not stand in line, shoulder to shoulder, with you, chief. If, you know, we're doing all the work, we've, all your vision and all these proactive things we're doing for fighting crime now, and you're not giving us even 2%, we want to eat too. And so, we got, we won. And I got a 45-minute cussing-out session from him later. But it was for the good of the people, good of, for my people that I stand with day-to-day, Monday through Friday, 24/7. So that was one thing I would say is unethical to me.
Ms. Bertini?
Yeah, so I think, for me, it is the phrase zealous advocacy. As an attorney, I have an ethical obligation to advocate zealously for my clients. And what comes to mind for me, but what does that mean? Does that mean telling a client what they want to hear or telling them with, based on my experience, the likely outcome? And so, that became a problem with one of my patent clients, you know? Patents, to some people, are like children to others. They are ideas that originate with the person. The person knows it up and down and all the way around. And they are in love with this idea that they want to have a patent application on. And they want a patent issued on this particular idea. But there was one client that I had to zealously advocate for by saying, "I love your idea. I love the invention, but..." "But the fact of the matter is that this is probably not going to be utility patent material." And that's hard to do. That's like telling a parent not to like your child, right? I mean, that's no good. So the way around that was to look at other ways that we could protect this client's intellectual property short of utility patent protection. In other words, a design patent, which in many ways, without getting into the minutia, differs. Like, so for a Coca-Cola bottle, you have a design patent. And so, the look and feel of the thing is what I helped the client realize we could capitalize on, still get some intellectual property protection, and not throw the baby out with the bathwater. So.
You're up for the first of question seven. And before I ask this, I'm wondering if anyone else in the audience have question cards that you would like to be picked up, have picked up? Because we would like more suggestions, if possible. So think about it and just holler at some of the volunteers. So Ms. Bertini?
Yes.
Question seven. Assuming the California Forever's plans continue, what threats to Fairfield's prosperity do you think the proposed new town poses?
Well, the proposed new town, the entire, let me just say, the city council has taken no position on California Forever. From a personal point of view, I think the project was rolled out, it couldn't have had a worse rollout, because it was shrouded in secrecy and we didn't know what was going on, except this big money was coming into Fairfield for all of these promised developments in the new city. So I think part of a possible future threat is that, you know, I've been told that for California Forever, they've burned the boats, meaning they're not going away. They have the property on lock. And so, kudos to everybody who worked to put the brakes on this project. And what I believe is a future threat, if there's any threat to Travis Air Force Base, that's a major future threat. What I'd like to see California Forever do is to do what they should have done in the first place. And that is to engage this community in the city of Fairfield in Solano County. Engage the community, reach out to our residents, get to know what we do in Fairfield and Solano County. And quite frankly, we have existing infrastructure that could really stand some of their California development money. You can start at the mall and then go downtown and then go on the North Texas Corridor. So quite frankly, I believe that California Forever needs to build its, that project and its managers needs to build their goodwill in this community by working with us in a transparent way that makes sure, that makes sure that we have consensus around how this project moves forward.
Mr. Joyce? Mr. Joyce. Would you, Mr. Joyce?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to hear the question again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Assuming the California Forever's plan, plans continue, what threats to Fairfield's prosperity do you think the proposed new town poses?
Initially, I don't think, I actually think that most of, a lot of the labor will come out of there. I think that they'll contract with the, some of the lumber or the, you know, the building materials. But eventually, I think that homebuyers or the others, so will be an economic threat. I think right now, politically, it's a threat. I, I'm glad that they're working with the county. From what I hear, the county is not working with them as likely as they do. I think, you know, that I'd like to see investment here of them in the city. Pam's correct. They own the land, so they're going to end up doing something with it someday. I think it's a misconception that if a ballot initiative happens, that instantly there'll be 400,000 people here, right? Cordelia took 30 years to build and they're still building out there. So my, my perspective is, I think whatever happens, it's going to be and should be up to the whole community to vote. But I think they did a poor job, like Pam said, of rolling their program out. I think it was full of misconceptions and hopes. So very poorly done. I don't know what the total impact to Fairfield would be because they never incorporated or included the city of Fairfield in their plans. It was a county project.
Mr. Joyce, you start the next question.
He hasn't spoken yet.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Joe, Joe.
Mr. Martinez.
Martinez, yes. So in my part, my family would not even be here if it wasn't for Travis Air Force Base or for the farms here in Green Valley in Fairfield. I wouldn't be here. My mom and dad would have not met each other if it wasn't for Travis Air Force Base and the farm. Fairfield has, was built on Travis Air Force Base and the farming, the fruits, the oranges, the grapes. And so for Forever 20, Forever 20, sorry, California Forever to come in here totally disrespects what my campaign's all about, what the family and the friends and everyone that were built here in Fairfield. And so out of all the places that these investors chose, they chose right next to Travis Air Force Base. And like both Pam and Joe said, it's, it's a little how they presented it is sneaky to me. And I understand they, I understand they have the rights. They already bought the land. But again, if this campaign again is about building people power and creating a brand and taking pride, taking Fairfield back of who we, who we are as Fairfielders. Again, we're Travis Air Force Base and a farming city. And we can, and we can grow from that. We can create new ideas. We can have a new generation built, that's built for the 21st century. And so there'd be many problems if it were to continue. You got Mare Island. I mean, it's, it destroyed, Vallejo was a beautiful city. And now it's not. And I don't want to talk more about that place. But that is, that is, it's going to, roads, more traffic. It destroys a lot of things here and for the quality of life here in Fairfield.
Okay, now you get to start, Mr. Martinez.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I think I'm, I think I'm back on track with my schedule here. Okay, the next question. And this has to do with the connection with the agricultural land around us. Do you support the city developing on prime agricultural land near Anheuser-Busch as is proposed in the new general plan that is going to be finalized?
So you said, "Anheuser-Busch"? Or sorry, can you?
The prime agricultural land near Anheuser-Busch.
Okay. Do I support, do I support the, the general plan?
The development, the city developing on that land.
You know, I got to be upfront. I don't have all the research and, you know, not, not have the privilege to be on the council at that, at this time and reading all upon that. For me, again, if we've, if we're, if we are creating a plane, we've got to, we can't be flying it while we're creating it. And so for myself in regards to building on, in that area, I'd, I'd really have to look into what are the plans. Again, it's kind of like building right next to Travis Air Force Base. You know, Anheuser-Busch and so Anheuser-Busch, I worked for Anheuser-Busch. I was a tour guide and it was super fun for a year. But I know they came here specifically for the water. And if, if any way, I don't know if there was some kind of deal back in the 80s in regards to, "All right, hey, I'll have it here as long as there's nothing else built." Then we'd have to look at that. Also, if there, if we had to build around that more with a general plan and if it, it didn't, it didn't go side by side with the water, the quality, quality, the quality of our water with Anheuser-Busch, then we'd, we'd really have to take heed on, on the plan and creating a, a plan, a plan there in that area. So I'd, I'd have to look into it more, but I would take heed and caution. Budweiser, Jelly Belly, that place was segregated for water and for infrastructure for business. So I'd really have to look more in the plan. If it, if it construed those businesses and they left, then because we're building there, then that would be a no-no for me.
Ms. Bertani.
Yeah. I am generally in favor of city-centered development and infill development. So in other words, I would prefer focusing on building out our existing infrastructure before building on any agricultural land that is being preserved. So that's just my frame of reference and my frame of mind when it comes to development. Let's maximize the existing infrastructure and build that out first before we, before we develop on agricultural lands. And I will say, just like I said with Travis Air Force Base, you know, anything that disrupts or impedes Anheuser-Busch, one of our obviously most successful businesses in this city and which employs hundreds of people, anything that would impede with Anheuser-Busch and its operations, I would have a hard time supporting that.
Thank you. Mr. Joyce.
Did your question include Anheuser-Busch or are we adding that to the general plan?
The question was, do you support the city developing on prime agricultural land near Anheuser-Busch?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm hard of hearing, so I didn't hear that. Yeah, so again, that, that land, I, I know that because of the major development there, that's, you know, and the logistic centers and everything that are coming out is key. So I know that if they expand into that area, you know, it's going to be included in the, in there. But I agree with Pam is I think that the city infill project and, and changing the general plan to allow more height and high density would be a more feasible plan to allow developers to be able to recover some of the costs and make it affordable, right? Our city ordinance is that we put real tight restrictions on height is what's making it so the cost and single-family home restrictions and stuff, ADUs and that make the, make the affordability so high here in the city of Fairfield that, you know, moderate-priced housing is almost non-existent here in Fairfield. So I think those are the things in the general plan that should be looked at is to make affordability. And again, infill would be my preference also. There you go. I beat 30 seconds.
Okay, has everybody spoken to that one?
Is it my turn? Yeah. Everybody spoke.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so next question, you're up. And this one is, what actions should Fairfield take to reduce its unfunded pension liabilities?
Okay, unfunded pension liability is, again, either they're going to have to, you know, take from our reserves, which we can't afford to do. It's only, like Pam said, it's only at 20%. Those are those things that, you know, we, we carried over year after year. So again, we, we normally, in most cities, right? And again, remember, I've not been there other than on the administrative side during my law enforcement career, right? You pay those down when you have reserves, right? And, you know, we've got to be flush. So again, we've got to do those things that are smart, you know, and, and generate that revenue either through sales or surplus or the one-time monies. And again, we can't do stuff like we did during the time when we did get ARPA money, right? And, and provide incentives or salary increases. Because salary increases with one-time money, right? The second year of that salary increase, you don't have the money to do it. So that comes out of general fund money. So again, it's, unfunded liabilities are just those things that you got to carry over and hope that you get an increase in revenue to be able to pay them down.
Mr. Martinez.
Sometimes you can't, yes, I mean, sometimes you can't make lemonade out of lemons. It's, it's one of those things the city's got to pay off when they can.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez.
I'm not going to try to sell you snow tires in Florida on this one. I'd have to do more research in regards to that question. I don't want to respect everyone's time, so I would have to do more research on that question. I don't want to come up here and give you a bunch of blargy on a question I need more research on. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bertani.
Sure. So our unfunded pension liability, this is the gap between the benefits that are expected to be paid and what's actually in the bank. And that gap for us is about $230 million and growing, right? $230 million. What are we going to do to decrease our unfunded pension liabilities? What we're going to do immediately, our, our unfunded liabilities are pooled with other cities in Solano County. And there's one city in particular that shall remain unnamed that is contributing significantly more or contributing significantly more than any other city in the pool to the increase in our unfunded liability exposure. So what this, what the city is going to do, what we're going to do is we're going to restructure the pool. And somebody ain't going to be in the pool anymore. But we have to because enough is enough. $230 million. We, we can't do the same thing and expect a different result. So that's the number one thing for us to do. Restructure the pool to, to eliminate the one player in the pool that's really causing our unfunded pension liabilities to increase kind of exponentially. You know, with all the others being about the same, this one outlier is going to be just that, an outlier. So that's my answer.
Ms. Bertani, you start the next question.
Okay.
What character traits do you feel you have that make you an effective leader?
Tenacity. Because anybody who's been in public service, anybody who's been on the city council or on the board of supervisors or an assembly member, you learn very quickly that unless you are tenacious, you're, you're probably not going to move, move the needle very much. In other words, like, you know, I think my son kind of describes it as, you know, she's like a junkyard dog on a bone. That's me. It really is. Because that's how you have to be to get things done in a bureaucracy where there's so many balls up in the air, there's so many issues. There's so many, you, you, you have to be, learn how to be tenacious. And number two, I, another quality that I have beyond tenacity, you asked me to blow my own horn, so that's what I'm doing. The other quality that I have is I am a consensus builder. I am a consensus builder, meaning the fuel for an effective economy is you. Is engagement with our bosses, with our constituents, to listen, to come and listen like we did at our listening tour right here at Paradise Valley Estates. We wouldn't have known about that issue had we not come and listened to your concerns and then do something about it. So really having a robust community engagement strategy with tenacity, with our, with our residents engaged, that is effective democracy.
Mr. Joyce.
So I think my biggest thing is I'm actually outspoken. I'm honest. A lot of times you'll hear that, a lot of people will tell you I'm very outspoken, but nobody will ever call me a liar. You might not like what you hear from me, but I will always tell you the truth. So again, if I'm your representative and you need somebody to stand up for you, I'm the first one that's going to take on that fight. I'm also always fair. I may not always agree with you, but I'm always going to be fair. And that's what you need in a leader. You need somebody that's going to call you out when, when they don't agree with you, but at least you know where I'm at. So you may not always like what I have to say, but you'll always know where I stand. So I ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez.
I think one trait of mine is, is energy. I think that a lot of the campaign, a lot of the support system that I have here in this campaign, we're all, a lot of former teachers that have built who I am today, who built a lot of my cousins, a lot of my family and friends, brothers and sisters here today. And I just, I always just got to tout Fairfield. I just always do. Every time I'm, I'm out in the, in the streets, I always say, I went to David A. Weir School right next to Pennsylvania Avenue, right next to David Weir. I went to Sullivan Middle School. I was in the marching band. 20, 30 years of, of number one grand master trophies. I went to Fairlawn High School, the Falcon's Nest, Mr. Carpito, Coach Hood. And if there's one thing about me and a lot of the teachers and friends have founded that have supported me is that I do have a ball of energy, but I, but I understand that energy without focus is nothing. And I think that the, the reason why they give me support in this endeavor, in trying to leave Fairfield, bringing change to Fairfield, is because I do have directive. I do have purpose. And I understand Fairfield. I understand it from, from Peabody Road all the way to Gold Hill at Rodriguez High School. And that is one of the main things that I want to bring to the city is, again, cliche in my own campaign, is to just bring new energy, new faces, new innovation to, to help, to help the leadership today. I mean, it's a struggle with today's leadership. They're doing a great job. But a lot of, a lot of my generation is, is not doing anything. And so when I, when I want to, when we retire, I want to have, I want to have the same things that we have today. Nice roads, nice parks, police, fire. And I teach my kids, money doesn't, money doesn't just grow on trees. These nice things you have just doesn't come free. And so that's what I want to push for. And energy is, is my number one trait.
Well, Mr. Martinez, you start the next question. Should Fairfield have an urban limit line to restrict development on farmland and open spaces on all sides of Fairfield?
To me, to me, yes. I mean, if we're trying to build, if we're trying to say that we are one Fairfield and, and that this is who we are, this is what defines us. that this is who we are, this is what defines us, if we become like San Francisco and Oakland and Alameda, one, five minutes, you're in Oakland, and next minute you're in Alameda. One minute you're here, and next minute it's a totally different, you know, economic development. So, for me, yes, if we stand as One Fairfield and trying to take pride in wanting businesses to come to us, we've got to show that we stand together. And for me, I really want to push Travis Air Force Base and farming. I always continue to say that. As a little kid, it's just always been my grandpa and my mom just always saying, you know, when we were in the Philippines, we had nothing. And I just went there for the first time ever last year, and they had nothing. And I just didn't know how they even navigated to the airport. And so, it's just a constant thing in my family, just the American dream and what Fairfield has brought to us. And what I want to do is just give that back to my kids and give that back to my fellow brothers and sisters here in Fairfield. So, I would want and will fight that we do have urban lines in our city. Thank you.
Ms. Bertoni.
I keep, this keeps hooking onto my pants. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, as I've stated before, I am a supporter of infill city-centered development. I do believe that the urban limit line has created with our city some of the uniqueness of our city, with our, the parts, the lands that are protected from development. So, yes, I would say focus on city-centered development, focus on infill development, and maintain to the greatest extent possible our urban limit line so that we can preserve our ag lands and farmlands to the very best of our ability. Because I believe that they add to the character and the uniqueness of Fairfield as a Solano County city.
Mr. Joyce.
And, yeah, I agree with the urban limit line. I don't, I think that periodically it should be reviewed. It actually, I agree with the county orderly growth line, it's actually about to expire, should be already being reviewed and looked at. I think that the way we annex property in the county and the city should be reviewed and the restrictions tighten. Because I think that we do a lousy job of the restrictions, you know, and how we let them manipulate the way things are annexed, you know? So, I, yeah, I like the urban limit lines.
Thank you. Well, we're coming to the end of our time, so it's time for getting ready for your closing statements. And you'll have two minutes. Actually, we have a little bit more time, so I'm going to give you three, if you would like, three minutes. Yeah, thank, yeah, no problem. Three minutes. And remember, you don't have to take it all, but three minutes for your closing. And we're going to exactly reverse the order from the opening. Ms. Bertoni, you begin.
Okay, thank you. Once again, everyone, thank you for having us this evening. Really appreciate you taking the time and effort to, and to care enough about District Four to come out and share your questions and hear our thoughts about how we're going to be moving Fairfield forward in the coming years. Like I said before, the city of Fairfield, as you've heard over the last 90 minutes, has some very big-ticket items that are going to be coming before the city of Fairfield in the months and years to come. From homelessness and using grants passed in the correct way, that Supreme Court decision, to affordable housing, to our budget issues, to our LLMDs. We, Paradise Valley's LLMD last year passed, only two of nine that were up for a 218 vote. So, we've done a postmortem on what didn't work, what did work, so that moving forward, other LLMDs like where I live in Rolling Hills and Rancho Solano will have a fair shot at getting their landscape lighting and maintenance districts in place to preserve our, the beauty of our communities and our property values. Two, our general plan update, there are, two, our listening tours, there are a number of issues that will be before the city of Fairfield. And I believe, and I hope that you believed, that I am the only candidate in this race with experienced and proven leadership on the issues that matter in District Four, on the issues that matter at Paradise Valley Estates, on the issues that matter to the city of Fairfield. So, I thank you once again for your time and energy and for having us here, and I kindly ask for your vote on November 5th, or when you mail in your ballots. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez.
Thank you guys so much again for taking the time out of your day to come here and listen to us, listen to what Fairfield has, its issues it's going through, the good things that are going through with Fairfield. And this is, this is how it generates. This is where we get the ball moving. And again, I just want to, I want to say that Fairfield has a lot of great things, and they're doing a great, they're doing a great job. There's a lot of things to battle, homelessness, crime, the economy, I mean, just at the time we are right now, we are, we're there, and they're fighting, they're champions for it. So, I really want to give a big round of applause to the council right now for doing a great job in sustaining and maintaining what we have here in Fairfield. For myself, I'm running because we want to, I want to tap into new talents to come out. I just, I really feel that if we increased ourselves, if we had 10% more people coming out, that would be helping out with community service. That would be 10% more community service. If we had 10% more people to come out and help with the booming of the economy, the economy will bloom up. You know, we have deficits, we've got, you know, tax revenues, you know, we look at Vacaville and, you know, why is that, why is it getting everything? And so, we really want to tap into that. If we can tap into our tax structure, tax revenue, we can expand city services, if we expand city, if we expand city revenue. Again, thank you guys all for taking the time to meet with us and talk with us. Hopefully, we can talk more in the back. I just wanted to say that when my kids grow up, and that's the main thing, is like, hey, things don't grow up on trees, is that I came here a couple of weeks ago, and this is where I want to be. I mean, the food is just amazing. I love being with people. I get energy from people. And so, I don't, I don't want to be left alone with my kids and my grandkids. I want to be here. And I took a tour, and it's really beautiful. And I think this is how it should, this is how it should be, is communities, you drive over here, you're coming into like Batman's den, like Bruce Wayne's place here. And, but for real, I do, I do, I do really, you guys have it set. And I think this is how it should be. This is, this is a Fairfield that we should look at and how we should model by. So, thank you all again for taking the time to meet with us.
And Mr. Joyce.
And, yeah, thank you again for taking the time to be here. I'd like to close. Fairfield does need a change. My competitor, I'm sorry, opponents, competitors, both great people. You know, Pam's had 12 years on the council, you know, she has a lot of experience. But the city, again, we have what we have, right? We have current crime, we have the other stuff. It's time to allow some other movements, some change, right? Another opportunity. I've lived in this district, I've watched Rick work on the district. Again, I waited, he retired, I decided to step up and make myself home. But I have other experiences that my two colleagues don't. I provide care for my 90-year-old mother-in-law, right? I have senior experiences, right? My mother, I'm a home care provider. We looked at this facility for the care, but I provide care for senior every other, every day of my life. I am one of you, I am a senior, right? I do that every day. We need somebody that has those experiences also, you know, your safety, the other thing, in our community, looking after those things. But Paradise Valley, Sanctuary Valley, those other things, we need to, and I'm sorry, we just need to make sure that we have those things addressed along with the other things in the city. We need a spokesperson that speaks our language, that's not afraid. And I'm not saying they're afraid, what I'm saying that's going to speak up, that when you ask me a question, I'm going to tell you the answer. Again, you might not like it, but you're going to know the answer, right? If I can't tell you the answer, I'm going to tell you that also, right? I just can't tell you. I'm not saying that they are not going to tell you that. What I'm telling you is, that's what I'm going to tell you. I hope that you guys take the time to consider all of the answers that you've heard today. And with that, I'm going to close. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as we, as we close, I want everyone to remember that the views expressed have been those of the candidates and not of Paradise Valley Estates or League of Women Voters. A big thank you to the candidates and a big thank you to PVE. And now, it's time for you to express your appreciation.